Item 3.0, roll call. Let the record reflect that all members are present. Item 4.0, student rep. Do we have one tonight? Item 5.0, agenda additions and deletions.
I have one in front of you. It's going to be 12.8, approving hippodrome lease. Nothing has changed on the lease from how it has been previously. You guys are already aware of the cost from a previous meeting. And then on 12.5, do you want to explain?
Yeah, we have to pass a resolution canvassing votes from the election last Tuesday. The details are on there and you look at the summary statements which are attached to make sure all the math is correct and everything.
There is no change?
Yeah, from the board packet, on number two on the first page there as specified in the attached, it's precinct summary statements. I discovered after that that's what we're supposed to do, so.
And then under 12.7, once closed session, I'd also like to add, school security, again.
Item 6.0, visitor input. Come to the podium, state your name.
Sure, my name is Tom Hoffdahl. I got a chance to look at the video from the building ground meeting that you had on the end of October and appreciate the candor, appreciate the fact that you guys had a good discussion about it. I just wanted to just clarify a couple things that there were questions about. One, the track being muddy or whatever, I think we all know that we have different types of thaws here in this area. Sometimes this thaw's out pretty early. Sometimes we gotta wait till June before we can get the frost out of the ground, it seems. But certainly when the frost is in the ground, we do have issues with the track being muddy. Once frost is out, track's very good. It's actually an excellent track. It's nice and soft for the kids to run on. And they're having, actually five years ago, the track team was out on the track, first day of practice, in the second week of March. So it's been, over the course of many years, there's been lots of variation on when they can actually use that track. So, yeah, it is a little muddy before that frost comes out, which is why I was trying to encourage you, try to do something about the sod so that you get that layer off now instead of wait until springtime to do it. Secondly, Mr. Andrews asked a question about what's the difference between running on sod and the track. And I think we have to, maybe I'm getting the sense that some of you, I think that when people get on that track, they just jog around it and just jog around it. But really, the big purpose of having a continuous track is to do some speed work. It's, you know, jogging around, jogging around isn't the thing here. They do speed work on that. And they need a continuous track to do that. And if you get, if you go there and look now, you have two different surfaces, obviously, a little bit harder surface with a cinder track and a softer grass, but you also have an elevation on each end that this runs would have to run up on and over and so on. So that's the big difference there. The track itself, for a terrain facility, is excellent. It's soft on the kid's legs, especially for high-speed work. And when it's continuous, they can do their 440s and 880s, the faster things to do with their training for those events. It's not just jogging slowly around circles. Just wanted to clarify a few things. Thank you.
Where are we sitting on that? What are we going to do with that fat service?
The last thing the board gave me was to talk with Virginia about times. Then Dr. Schmidt is, I just talked to him on Friday about it and they haven't come to an agreement yet, so that's where it's at.
Moving on, item 7.0, approve the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda presented.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Sager. Support. Support by Peterson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.0, approve the treasurer's report for the month of October and first check writing of November.
Okay, other receipts, we had general fund, $943,000, $945 and 10 cents. Food service, $39,144, $56 cents. Community education, $9,763 and 47 cents. Capital outlay, $276,515 and 88 cents. Debt service, $7,241 and 86 cents. Channel 12, $4,260 and 20 cents. OPEB bonds, $3,222 for a total of $1,284,093 and 7 cents. Disbursements, general fund, $207,766 and 45 cents. Food service, $47,411 and 29 cents. Transportation, $83,672 and 28 cents. Community education, $7,614 and 12 cents. Capital outlay, $18,249 and 96 cents. Debt service, $2,541 and 50 cents. Channel 12, $3,225. OPEB bonds, $2,920, $925 and 50 cents for a total of $373,406 and 10 cents. Payroll, $643,051 and 39 cents. Transportation, $37,027 and 33 cents. Community education, $29,889 and 87 cents. Flex benefit plan, $2,398 and 68 cents for a total of payroll of $707,569 and 91 cents. Our check-in comp balances, the miners' bank, $4,794,914 and 1 cent. First Bank of Gilbert, $2,051,945 and 46 cents for a total of $6,846,859 and 47 cents. For the month of November, first check writing, disbursements, general fund, $78,339 and 68 cents. Food service, $88 and 65 cents. Transportation, $8,278 and 6 cents. Community education, $70 and 85 cents. Capital outlay, $6,091 and 70 cents. Channel 12, $1,400. Total of $94,268 and 94 cents. I also had a October 18 check in here too, which I wanted to, which I signed off on. So for the month of October 18 and for the month of the first check writing of November 17, I make the motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll second.
Motion by Generalini, second by Sager. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9.0, the consent agenda. Item 9.0A is approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, October 23, 2017. And item B is approve 2017-2018 extracurricular assignments. Call for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
You'll motion it?
Second, motion.
I was calling for a motion, so.
Oh, you're calling, I thought you made the motion. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, I'll make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Generalini, second by Lautiger. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10.0 will be scratched. Item 11.0 personnel. Item 11.1 is approve Carrie Haas for early childhood and aid appointment.
Mr. Chair, Carrie Haas is already an employee for us. She was working in a different part of early childhood. With the addition of the, with the additional class that you approved earlier, she's moving up into that one, which is more hours, which is why she's on the agenda tonight. And then the one below it will fill the spot that she was in.
I'll make a motion to approve Carrie Haas for early childhood aid appointments.
I'll second. Motion by Sager, second by Andrews. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11.2 is approve Mary Anders for early childhood aid appointment.
I'll move.
Motion by Peterson.
I'll second.
Second by Lautiger. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11.2 is approve Mary Anders for early childhood aid appointment.
I'll move.
Motion by Peterson.
I'll second.
Second by Lautiger. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12.0, new business. Item 12.1 is approve the licensed school nurse job description.
Mr. Chair, we talked about this last Monday as being a part of our organization. This is simply a job description. This would still need to be negotiated with Ed Minnesota at this point.
Motion to accept that? Over. Motion by Peterson. I'll second it. Any discussion?
Do we have any names that we are looking for, somebody to fill this position? Do we know anybody?
We have one right now. She has the license. One of our health service assistants has the license.
So she'll fill that position, right?
She'll move into it.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I have a few questions. I've got them down here. As a school board member, I'm not totally versed in all the inner workings of the board, and therefore I have some questions at this time. Did the administration research all the laws of the school nurse prior to making this recommendation?
What do you mean?
They did.
No, what do you mean?
Did the, did the administration research all the laws before, of the school nurse, before making this recommendation? I mean, they're making the recommendation, that they researched it.
For the job description?
For the job.
For the job description.
For the job description.
Is there something we're missing?
Pardon?
Is there something we're missing?
Well, no, I'm just, did they, did they research?
I mean, it's a standard.
When you make a recommendation, that they researched that.
The recommendation for moving forward with school nurses is based on, like we talked about last Monday, it's, we're in a situation now where we can capture some funds through third-party billing, but we need a licensed school nurse to do so over at the Gilbert campus. So that's the reason why. I mean, if you're referring to the law that says that we have to have one, we don't because we don't have 1,000 students anymore. There was a time when we needed one and we didn't have one, but that time isn't anymore.
What happens if we go over 1,000 then, per se?
Then we still would need one, but I mean, the purpose of us moving in this direction, like I said, is to capture third-party billing funds at this point that we're currently not.
Is our average daily membership total, 1,000, under 1,000?
Yes.
Including all the programs that we have, total?
Mm-hmm.
It's under 1,000. Okay. Do we have a person with a licensed school nurse who dutch was employed in the district at this time?
Yes.
They do? Okay. Who is that?
Brianna Holland.
It's Brianna Holland. You can, that's public.
Okay. Is that person, is that person employed as a licensed school nurse or health service assistant?
She's currently employed as a health service assistant.
Assistant, okay. Okay, who's the license is being used for third-party billing under medical assistance and are we third-party legally billing and receiving memberships or reimbursements?
I guess I don't understand that one.
You're asking if we currently, if we currently bill for third-party billing right now?
Yeah, by law, right.
We do for her. She can because she is a licensed school nurse, even though she's not. But if she, if we classify her as a licensed school nurse, she'll be able to supervise the one in Gilbert and will be able to bill there as well. So yes, we are and no, we aren't.
Okay, yes, will the school nurse position go into the teacher's contract?
Yes.
Will they have to be posted and advertised as a new position and receive applications?
I suppose we would, yeah.
Okay. I guess one thing, and I voted on it too at that time on our, on our January 9 meeting, with a licensed school nurse employed, I don't know why we, why did we hire her as a health assistant?
Because at that time, that's all we had classified as. We're trying to change that now? That's the purpose of this? That's all? We had a health service assistant classification in the ASME contract. That was all we had?
That's a person retiring or anything, we replace that person, right?
Right.
Okay, that's it for me.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12.2 is approve the bookkeeper job description.
This will be the shared position between us and Virginia with the shared business manager. We'll hold the contract though. We are still, I know the board asked me last Monday to give you some ballpark as to what the contract is going to look like when we look at all of these positions. And I've actually asked ARC to compile a survey list so that you'll be able to see what area districts are paying for these folks. But we'll, we'll post and, so that sits out there for a while and try to gather applications, see what's out there at this point.
Can I get a motion to approve the job description? Motion by Andrews.
I'll second.
Second by Sager. Any discussion?
Yeah, on these, on these reassignments, these bookkeepers and all this other stuff, do we know who's going to be filling these positions from within?
The bookkeeper would be, we don't have anybody internally. That's basically a replacement for the business manager that left. So it would be an open posted position.
Okay, like, you know, we're going to talk about human resources. Are we going to have anybody?
Human resource.
Do we know who's like, is going to be, because we want to, we're going to be moving people around with them?
We are going to move, we're going to move our internal people that are here already around in those positions, yes.
Okay. And then Ms. Berry, will she be, do we know where she's going yet?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep. And they're all okay with it.
Very good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12.3, approve the human resources director job description.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Peterson.
I'll second.
Second by Andrews. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12.4, approve updated historian job description.
I'll move.
Motion by Addy. I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 650, canvassing returns of votes of school district general election.
This will obviously be roll call mode.
Yeah. Any motion to accept it first?
I'll move.
Motion by Peterson.
I'll second.
Second by Sager. Any discussion before the roll call? Hearing none. Roll call.
Director Generalini?
Yes.
Director Lautiger?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Sager?
Yes.
Director Chaff?
Yes.
Director Andrews?
Yes.
Director Peterson, yes. Motion carries, Generalini.
Congratulations to Mr. Hollander.
And thank you, Mr. Andrews, for your time as well.
Do we know when Mr. Hollander will be sworn in? Is it next meeting already since this is a special election or?
I believe that it'll be next meeting. If you know, someone who knows something I don't.
Next January.
This is a replacement position. I'll check for sure.
Item 12.6, approve first reading of the policy 533, wellness policy.
Excuse me, you want to talk about that? You're in a wellness committee.
Well, I wasn't at the official meeting that we had for it, but.
The, we had to, our wellness policy was outdated. And so we had a wellness committee meeting recently to update it according to just the state standards. They changed this the last time we did it.
Okay. Is this, I mean, is this, questions, has this always been like this or is it like the rewards and stuff for classes or is this putting end to pizza parties or?
That's the big question.
That's my big question.
It's been like that?
Okay. And it's kind of allowed to fly. Just curious because I can't.
Not officially on the record though.
Okay, not on the record, okay, but otherwise.
We don't have pizza parties, is what Kerry's saying.
We don't have pizza parties or ice cream parties, okay. Otherwise.
Or cupcakes, so none of that stuff.
Well, we know we've never had that. That's, okay, I can approve this then. Okay. All right. Let's go with motion to approve. Anyone?
I'll move.
Motion by Addy.
I'll second.
Second by Lautiger. Any further discussion?
The PTA member Mia's having a really hard time with all of that right now.
What?
Following the, the things that we're not supposed to technically do.
That stuff didn't change, so.
Right.
I know, but I'm a rule follower, you guys. I really am.
And you were the head of the PTA all that time.
I know.
Now it's starting to come in, right?
Yeah, I agree that pizza party sounds better than a carrots with ranch party myself, but that's.
Okay.
I get it.
Thank you, sorry.
Any further discussion?
No other discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12.7, we set closed session, discussion, negotiation strategies and school security.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Generalini. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12.8 is the approve hippodrome lease with City of Edwith.
This is, you approved, the only thing that changed in that whole lease is the amount of money that you had approved already. It's for four years, $45,000 each. No increases any of those years. And for $300 a year. Last year we used $278, so. And it's been pretty typical for the last four or five.
Compared to years past, it's a very good lease. I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Second by Lautiger. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries. Item 13.0, administration, administrative report.
Oof, this is a beast tonight. Buckle in.
All right.
All right, so enrollments, 9:28. It's Butler. We've been sitting all year. We've been hovering in that area. Want to give a little recognition, we have several of our student athletes that have done outstanding things in the past few weeks. First one goes out to Natalie Foltz. She, she made it on to state with cross-country and finishing 1/16th out of 1/74. Girls tennis team, we had three girls go down and Maddie and Audrey actually made her all the way to the finals and barely lost, so they took second place in the state. Pretty cool. Swimming, this past weekend, we have, we had four girls make it to finals in sections. Ellie Jankowicz took second in the 50 free, which she is going to state with that. Karla George took first in the 100 fly, which she is going with that. Mark Carey was seventh in the breaststroke and Molly Holbrook was third in the 500 free. As a team, those same four girls won the 200 free relay, so they are headed to state this week. And they also took fourth in the 200 medley and the 400 free relay as well. And they actually also, they set new team records in all three of those events. And I should mention, Ellie actually set the school record in the 50 as well. Even more important, they scored a Section 7 Silver Academic Award, which means their team GPA was 3.6 or higher. We always like that. Talking a little bit about staff development. On November 6, we had a full day. We had an Apple rep here as part of our package that we, when we bought the new iPads, we got two days of Apple training. He was here with all the staff. On that Monday, we also had a Pearson rep. Pearson is our math curriculum, key through five, and that we've used for the past year. And we're trying to switch over, as I mentioned before, we're switching over to the digital version of the Pearson Realise. And that gentleman was here to help us facilitate that. So it was a really good day for all of us. We got some time at the end for the elementary folks to get into PLCs and then again on Wednesday to talk about how they're going to implement some of this stuff. We've pretty much gone through the training on the how and now it's a matter of getting it done. We've started playing with it this past week, so. Pretty cool stuff that's going on there. In this past Wednesday, we went into PLCs in the high school. We had a discussion on rigor, talking about how to increase rigor in some of our more challenging classes. And then again, the elementary did their math and reading, so. We've had some real successful days and can't thank the board enough for giving us that time. Let's see here. Over at Franklin, it's Book Fair Week. You might see Kelly in that picture somewhere. That's going on. We have dress-up days. Today was pajama day, favorite book character day tomorrow, western day on Wednesday, Thursday is spirit day. Of course, we're not in school on Friday. Today was also eat your parent, eat with your, eat, yeah, eat your parents. Eat with your parents. So we had real good participation. Lots of parents ended up having a pretty long line. Kids are all patient. Everyone was good though. It was pretty cool. Conferences, actually, Mr. Grip is, well, I'll get to admit, the elementary conferences are tomorrow night and Thursday night. All of the elementary conferences are scheduled, so it isn't the first come, first served thing. Most parents show up. Over in Gilbert, Mr. Grip is at conferences tonight over in the Nell Sheen, which is why he isn't here right now. But you wanted to mention the veterans program, how awesome that was, and thanking Lauren Laun for organizing it. We've, our previous organizer retired last year, so Ms. Laun took that over this year. Great as usual. It's a good program that they run over there. Conferences, Monday and Wednesday, tonight and Wednesday. You also want to mention the fall play that's going on Tuesday and Thursday night at 7:00 PM over there. It's called the best haunted house ever. Now it's you.
October 23 was our last school board meeting and I wasn't here at that time because I was out ill. But I did want to recognize Mrs. Forsman for, she took a group of kids down, honor students to the choir festival at UMD. And so that was a picture of all the kids. All area schools take their top choir kids and they go and they, the UMD professors work with the kids. And some of our students even had individual lessons. with the kids, and some of our students even had individual lessons with a UMD professor that was really well received. And then, Mr. Strasser took his physics class on Friday, October 27th, to St. John's University in Collegeville, Minnesota, and there's an engineering design competition, and one of our students pictured there, Brody Havisto, he took second place in a popsicle dragster. So, he made race cars or dragsters out of popsicle sticks, and he took second place. So, congratulations to him. And then, celebrate the arts, we had Mr. Gritsmacher and Mrs. Walls take about 35 students down to the Park Square Theater, and they watched Hamlet, and they also went to the Minnesota History Museum. So, it was a fun trip for them. And lastly, we have a couple of choir concerts and orchestra concerts coming up. This Thursday, here at the high school in the boardroom, we have our senior high band and choir concert, and then the following Tuesday on November 21st in Gilbert Auditorium will be the orchestra concert.
So, I've been talking to you folks about our next phase of technology upgrade, and we wanted to look at furniture, audio, and new boards. The boards, this is a poor example because this is a newer board up here, but most of the boards in our classrooms are about 10 years old, and we're in need of upgrade at this point. So, we, a group of us went last Thursday, one of the service co-op, there was a, there was a little mini show that was, some vendors had some wares out. Kind of tough for you to see there, but they had some alternative seating, looking up at the top row. I mean, we're traditionally, all of our classrooms right now are basically, we put them left and says, old classroom where we have the straight rows. And a lot of things that we're doing now with iPads and different collaboration, it's nice to have those desks that are interchangeable, you can make different groups with them, so, just looking at some of that stuff. The other big one is audio. We had, a couple of years ago, we started saving money in our Safe Schools account. We get a few hundred thousand, a few hundred thousand, about 10,000 a year in Safe Schools every year. And we had been saving because our PA system in the high school is not good, to say the least. Been looking at some different options. This particular one, the Juno, is, you can see, it's about a, about a three-foot amplifier that serves a couple purposes. One, the, one of those units goes into each classroom. The instructor has a little mic that they wear around, and actually amplifies the sound in the room. Kind of newer trend that's going on. When I was at a different school, we did it, and it does really help some of the kids that struggle to pay attention to listen and understand. There's that aspect of it. It is also Bluetooth, so all of the computer, the iPads and all that, you can run all the sound through it. But most importantly, it's actually programmable, so we can make announcements right into the room, we can call into an individual room, we can call into the whole district, groups of school, it's all run through the iPad, so. Pretty neat system. Obviously, it's got a price tag to it, but we have, we do have money in the Safe Schools account that pretty sure will cover it. We have a rep coming up to put some demo units in in the next couple of weeks and give it a test drive, so we'll see how that goes. And finally, boards, boards have changed a lot in the last 10 years. Technology is moving quickly. What you're looking at there is probably the Cadillac of all of it, the Smartboard 7000 series. Best way for me to describe it is it's basically an iPad that goes on the wall. That is actually a touchscreen TV that is, that is, has wireless capability, so basically everything you can do with this, I mean, it has, the Smart series has iOS software, so it's compatible with the iPads. Teachers and students can project up just like I am now. You can also, you can see the different colored pens on the bottom. It can actually be used like a traditional whiteboard. Those aren't actual markers, but they're computerized markers, so when they touch them, the same colors come up, and there's an eraser there. I mean, it's very cool. I have one of those, a test unit coming into it, and I'm hoping to show you that in the next few weeks. Also, very expensive. It would be a very, very spendy upgrade for our district, but we'll take a look. I mean, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna have a couple of different units floating around the building now that teachers are trying out, they're quite like this, but hope to make some type of decision by me. Talk a little bit more about collaboration. One of the things down the pike, minor thing in the skiing, Mountain Iron is apparently joining in with skiing now, is that correct?
Yes, for boys.
So, we're gonna make an adjustment to our cooperative agreement with skiing at this time. We did, we did some work on boy swimming. Our numbers are down significantly. The coaches from both teams were, both teams being Virginia and us were interested. I told them that they needed to meet with parents and start to have that conversation with them, and that happened, and there was less enthusiasm for, than we anticipated. So, I guess at this time, I think we're just going to move forward just because swimming starts like now. We're going to proceed as separate teams for the time being, but I just wanted to let you know, we did look into it, we gave it a whirl, met with parents, and lots of apprehension at this time. I mean, there were, a lot of the traditional questions came up, you know, where are we going to swim? Who's home? What color will the suits be? That kind of thing.
All important things.
Yeah, and so, at this time, we'll just, you know, the seed's planted, so we'll move forward and see how it goes. I mean, there wasn't, I mean, they, I think everybody understands that that day is coming just because of our numbers on both sides. I mean, Virginia doesn't have very many either. But they'd like to, like to hang on for another season, so, so be it. And finally, we had talked at the last collaborative meeting about forming a committee to talk about all these things, after-school activities, not just athletics. And Virginia is working on forming such a committee. It's going to be a smaller committee than the larger group that we're doing now, and I'd like you to think about, I need at least two board members to participate in that committee, so I'd like you to think a little bit if you'd like to be a part of that, and if you would, if you could just send me a quick email or just email one. And we'll give you some dates and some agendas and see how that goes. Monday, we'd also talked, or the previous meeting, we'd also talked about MSBA training and evaluation. I did get ahold of Katie Landre, who did the last one with us, and she's recommending that we wait until our new member's seated and at least has Phase 1 training underneath him. And in the meantime, she, MSBA has a self-evaluation for the board, and she would like us to do that, so I'll discuss that with Chairman Chad and decide how to proceed with that, and then we'll, I know that you're signed up for December 8th, well, you will be signed up for December 8th Phase 1 training, so probably sometime after that, we'll schedule something in.
So, the MSBA training, what was that about?
Training for what? You mean, to bring her here?
Yeah.
The one we talked about. We talked about superintendent evaluation, we talked about training.
Oh, we talked about, from what I recall, the, there was discussion about having an MSBA come up to help us to, so it's kind of a training to help us figure out goals and.
For the superintendent.
For the superintendent.
Right, right.
But also, I feel if we're gonna, you know, I feel like we need to be evaluated too, not just.
Okay.
Our thought was, it's one year in, it's kind of a good time to see where we're at and.
And there was discussion that, I mean, the first time they came up is that they were going to come up as a follow-up training session and just see what things were going and give us more training if desired, and that was kind of agreed upon last time we talked about it.
That's what I did. My last thing, I'd like to give a big thank you to Mike for filling in. Adam Milman, appreciate your time, and it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last thing, just want to remind you, December 7th field trip, I know I got commitment from Kelly. She's gone. I got a maybe, I got a maybe.
Maybe. 6:30 below, I can't go.
Yeah.
I got a maybe. Just work on it. I'll get, I'll find out, for sure.
We're gonna start planning pretty soon, so if you could give me a more than a maybe.
I will do that by Wednesday.
Okay, excellent.
And what's, how is the trip going to be? I mean, what's the, what's the kind of the itinerary? Are you going to leave the night before?
We are going to leave the night before, head down there on the 6th, and stay in a hotel. Our tour starts at 9:00 the next morning. It'll be most of the day. We will probably, I have six teachers that are, I believe it's six teachers that are coming with, that includes, if you decide to, but Charles is coming, counselor. And if the three of you all go and me, that's 10, so we can fit in the van if we need to, or we can do two, doesn't matter. All right? That's all I have to share.
Okay. Take a short recess and come back into the call session.